Good morning, everybody. It is September 4th, 2020. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV in our order of business this morning. This is the Friday morning meeting that we have recently established. We'll have our open session called Order, Opening Procedures, Agenda Review and Adoption. We'll have time for public comments. And our items of interest to the public include the COVID-19 update, phases models of learning, status of athletics, and then we will adjourn. So I'll take a roll call and just ask you to say if you're okay with the order of business this morning. Mark Carey?
Here, yes.
Aaron Williams?
Yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here, yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here, and yes.
And yes for me as well. So we will start by asking if there are any members of the public who are here and would like to give any comment. I don't see anybody. So we will move on with the COVID-19 update from Mr. Adams, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a brief update before we get into the data, which is the purpose typically of this, this meeting. And I will state that we've had an adventurous week in the Ashland Public Schools, and Ed can attest to that. But I think, for those who don't know, we, we had some educators test positive this week, and we had to go through our process of, of quarantining. And we are in that process. It's been great. Ed and the nursing staff of all their schools have been very helpful. What I would say is, this occurred, basically, not getting into specifics because we can't, but none of the educators were actually in the facility all week. So we, we were notified over the weekend, of last weekend, that we could have a couple of concerns. And so we took care of that. The, the buildings were cleaned appropriately. They were left unattended for, I think it was close to 72 hours, and then cleaned appropriately, and, and staff was back working, with the exception of those who were considered close contacts or potential COVID cases. So I want to thank Ed and everyone for working through this. And again, I'd rather have it happen now, so we can understand our protocols and our processes. But I think it went quite well. Ed, would you agree? In terms of, in terms of our process and our, our tracing? And I think even staff, the communication with our staff was important. So, so that's really the update, where we are. That being said, anyone who has, has been quarantined or considered to have to be quarantined will not impact at this point. We do not believe it will impact the start of school in any way, shape, or form for the buildings, because we caught it early enough.
Can I just ask a process question? When you have that, that kind of situation, are, is, for the people who are not deemed close contacts, and were able to come back in the building?
Yep.
Are they either being tested or being given the opportunity to be tested?
Yes, that will, that will happen next week. So we, we've been working with, and Ed has been working with the Department of Public Health. As you know, they have a rapid response mobile unit. And we've spent a couple of days, we've been trying to, to get it fully scheduled. But as of last night, Ed and I spoke, and he's getting, waiting for the confirmation this morning.
And I got it.
And you got it. So yes, we are all set for next week to do it. Yep.
I guess what I was maybe thinking more about is in the process, once I understand things were getting going now.
Yes.
If, if we were to have this scenario play out a week from now?
Right.
And we have the same kind of thing happen, would we be able to have people tested as soon as it's medically wise? You know, I know it's like, if you do it five minutes later, it may not be worthwhile. But would they be able to do it before they came back in the building?
We do not have, I mean, if you're asking if we have onsite capacity to do that at this point, the answer is no. That is what Ed has been working on, is, in terms of applying for the availability of a machine and for us to do the PCR tests. Ed's ordered the machine. Is that correct, Ed?
Correct.
And, you know, so we've been put into a, a queue, if you will, to get up and running. So we're hoping, what, end of September, early October? So potentially, Mark, when school begins?
Yep.
In the middle of September, we're only a week or two lag of getting the availability to do that.
Maybe I phrase my question poorly. I think I was asking really if that's the goal, and I think you're saying.
Yes, yes, it is. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Any other questions about that comment?
And I always want to be, be careful, you know, when we're dealing with, with employees and privacy rights. So I, I've made it clear to all of our staff too, that, you know, Ed and I went back and forth on this last night as well. You know, this is, these are medical records, and these are people with medical concerns, and we want to make sure that we keep their privacy at the utmost concern for us.
So Jim, Laurie, I have a question. So in the meantime, while we're waiting for, you know, getting our own machine?
Yep.
The testing, so just, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. The state has a mobile testing that will come out if, if we, if we need it?
Correct. If, if we request it, and there, we're deemed to be a cluster. You know, in a cluster, what does that mean? It could be, what, three cases, Ed? And so not a lot of cases, but three cases. And so that's what we did, Kathy. We requested it, and they've agreed to come out. Yep. And we can test up to 50, 50 employees. It doesn't have to just be the localized group of educators. We can, we can test up to 50. So there'll be other folks that we provide the opportunity to.
So that's what you requested? That's what's coming next week?
That is correct.
Okay. So the teachers that had tested positive, how did they know they had tested positive? They on their own went and got tested?
That is correct.
Informed you? Okay.
Yeah, they informed the nurses and Ed.
Okay.
And then, so basically, the process will be the educator informs the nurse and the principal of, of the, of the buildings. And then Ed is part of that loop as well. And then if it's a, an employee who lives in another town, then it has to work with the other communities as well. I am the last to know, to be honest with you. It's more important that, that the principals and the nurses and Ed are on top of it, and then they'll let us know.
Right. And you being the last doesn't, is probably pretty quick anyway.
Exactly. It's, it's, it's probably within 10 minutes, but.
Right, exactly. So, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So that's really the, Ed, do you have anything more that you think you need to add to that scenario, or are we good?
No, just like I said, so the, the only thing that we added in was just the component where I, once we send out the letter and have everything that I notify Chris, so that he knows how to code them in, in our system.
Right.
Properly.
And who is Chris?
Chris Matthew, our business director.
Oh, okay, thank you. I know that, Chris.
Yeah, you know that, Chris, so.
We just, that, that way we closed the loop and every, all the proper notifications are done.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Excellent. Okay.
So, yep. So the, the next piece was the, the sharing of the, of the data for this week. And what I'm gonna do is share my screen, Laurie, if you don't mind, and just show how we track this. Ed and I do this daily. And there are discrepancies between, and there have been discrepancies all along, between the state DPH data that they post on a Wednesday and what we typically get out of our system, the Maven system that Ed gets, because I, I actually spoke yesterday with a number, an individual from DPH, because I was trying to figure out exactly the number they were using to help us calculate and using our population size for the per 100,000, the incident daily. And, and I was saying, well, how come our number, are the number we have in, with the Maven software is different than what you're posting on the DPH website? And why is that? And their answer was, well, often you could have duplicate records posted into the system, their system, because someone is coded in, maybe at their pediatrician's office or doctor's office, and then somewhere else. And they have to clean that data up, and they don't do that every single, before they post all the data. We've had that happen where someone from Framingham was on our, on our list. They were in Ashland, but they were coded as Ashland, but they were really Framingham resident. And Ed, you know, has to go through and reconcile all that. And so our numbers are, are a little different. It's off by one, I think. Was that right, Ed?
Well, speaking of, speaking of cleaning up data, so when you show your screen, Jim, I just picked up on another one today. So the, the, you're gonna see one here from September 2nd, a 21-year-old.
Yep.
Now off of our list. She goes to school, I found out last night, she goes to school in Virginia, but used her Ashland address when she went and got tested. So she doesn't count because she's in Virginia.
Right.
So there's just an example. The, the data is so fluid, it changes hours.
So, so thanks. So, and, and so what you'll see here is I, I have updated this list. And, and I think there are two things that we've talked about, at least within the, the transition planning, is that we'll use the state data, that Wednesday data from week to week. The commissioner spoke this week to us and said he would ask communities who have put metrics in place to use three weeks of trend data to, before making decisions, instead of having communities go remote, hybrid, remote, hybrid, hybrid, like continually weekly changing. So, so what I'm doing now is I will be providing you, and I'll clean this up in terms of a different look in future sharings on Friday, to also include the towns that we are in the pods for athletics to give their data, which should be helpful for us as well in, in making decisions as we move forward. But as you can see, this was as of yesterday, and, and it's inaccurate, because as Ed just said, the 21-year-old on 9/2 is actually off from, would be off from our rolls for the 14-day period through yesterday, right? So that number of the incident per 100,000 would change as well.
Can I interrupt you for one second? You started down the, the dialogue about the population number?
Yeah.
That, that number of 19,000, I've never heard us be near that.
Yeah, so 19, it's actually 19,293. There, the, the Donahue Institute, View Mass is in charge of, and this is what I got through yesterday, I tried to figure this out. They have a calculation rate that they look at population as well as our incident, every town's incident rate, and they base it. And I don't know the full statistical, maybe this is where, you know, Paul and Aaron will jump in at some point. They can read all the, the pieces of it. But they're the ones who are responsible for calculating the population to determine the 100,000 incident daily rate. I, I don't know what the, I don't know, Mark, how it's how they calculate that on a, on a, they're calculating the population on a weekly basis. And I don't know how they do that.
They've gotta be including like employment figures?
They must be. People who come in. So I, I don't know that specifically. I just, I was trying to figure out exactly what number they were using. And I finally was able to get to the Donahue Institute, which is at the bottom of the, of the, the chart, the weekly dashboard from the state. It says, this is who, this is how we're calculating populations to use in calc, in determining the per, the incident per, the daily incident per 100,000. If you want me to dig more deeply into the actual.
No, I'm sorry. I'll take, I'll take a look at my.
I'll, I'll send the link, I'll send the link out to you, and how they're doing it.
Yeah, and, and the challenge also is, even if you go and find the information there, either they don't know how to round properly, or, you know. So even if you take their data in their table, and you say, okay, now I know what you're using, and I had back, I reversed on it, so I knew a range in which.
Right.
They.
You were in the range, Mr. Kendall.
It was outside of my range, because I do this thing called rounding properly.
Does that mean you, you, you learned that in elementary school and could apply it as an adult?
I, I think I might have, you know, been able to at least do okay on that. Are you smarter than a fifth grader thing with it? But, so even, like I said, even if you take their, the data in their table and you run them, run the numbers, it would have been actually, I think, 5.4, not 5.5, and it doesn't make any sense. So, so it's, it's an indicator, and I think this just highlights why we're gonna keep on saying, we're gonna look at all the data. We're gonna look at our data.
All the time.
We, we, we're fortunate to have, have Ed, who has a lot more information, contextual information, than he can share with us directly, but then he could advise us on, you know, given what he knows, how that translates to impacting our decision-making, right? So while he can't give us all that information, he can certainly advise us on, hey, you know, I don't, I don't think this should impact your, you know, your information-making, so.
Jim, to that point, I think it would be interesting if you could take the latest population number either from Michael or the previous census, or whatever you feel is like the most accurate population number, and compare it, like put it with the 19,000, and then do the incident rate based on that, just so we can sort of see the difference.
I can probably do that. I'm just trying to.
It should push that number up, right, Aaron?
It would. Yeah.
Well, so, but, but it's also, if you look at the number they're using, now, given what Ed said, they would actually be two people off, two cases off. They had 15 cases, you know, yesterday, they were using 14 cases here locally, and now Ed's saying we're 13 cases. So, so it, I, I think the, the thing we need to impress upon people is it is a data point, it is an indicator, it is not an absolute figure. And the, probably the most important thing is the, the context around it, right? If, if Ed's like, you know, listen, this is, or maybe it's, ends up being leaked in public knowledge, we have an outbreak at a skilled nursing facility, right? You, you have, you have a group of five, and all of a sudden that bumps our number up, you know, o, over two points, right? Boom, just like that. But if that's, you know, a single family, who, when you do contact tracing, isn't even, you know, in our school system or, or whatever, you know, we, we have to take that into, into consideration, right? And so that's what's good about having Ed on these calls, is, and he talks to Jim every day, that context is exceptionally important.
Oh, absolutely. Well, when we agreed to have this meeting, right? And the, and the metrics that we were gonna be using, we weren't holding ourselves hard and fast to an algorithm, because there are those situational things of considerations where, you know, if there's an outbreak at one of the facilities, that's likely not going to impact the schools, and to make that call between the five of us is very important.
Right. And exactly why we're doing these meetings, which I think this is like a really good illustration of how we really need context for all of this, so.
And can I add, I, I'd like to add, since we're kind of talking about this, I want to add one thing in here. Four of the cases that you are seeing on this list are in one apartment building. And the apartments are next to one another. So we know there's some potential congregating going on in those hallways. We, we're already working with the management company to do extra cleaning of the common areas of that building. Just perfect example right there.
Yeah, and, and obviously, when, when you go through the contact tracing and you are confident you're contract tracing, that can also, if you're, if you're not confident, that you don't feel they've given you all the information, that's, that, that's something you can also, you know, help guide your, you know, your guidance staff, so.
So I, I just reshared my screen, updated as of this morning's conversation with Ed. So you'll notice that the, the per incident rate is now 4.0725. So, but what was important is we, we talked about using in the red here, if you see my circling of the arrow, that this is the data that's coming directly from DPH as on Wednesdays. So this was Wednesday, the 2nd, right? Today's the 4th, so I gotta update my other term. On Wednesday, the 2nd, the daily rate, case rate was 5.50 per 100,000, which was an increase in six confirmed cases over the 14 days. And you'll notice there's a cluster, you know, that, that Ed was talking about with the three on the, on the 28th, and those couple of days. That's where those six came from. I've updated this per, you know, adding, adding in three more days worth of, of data. Two more days. And our positivity rate was 1.85%. The Massachusetts positivity rate yesterday, which was the most recent data, was 1.24%. And you'll notice there is an uptick, right? And that's the, the explanation of those six confirmed cases. We went from a 3.3 to a 5.5. I'm telling you today, based on what our data is, actual data and accurate data, modified by Ed this morning, is it's 4.07 today. And, you know, when we then take all of this into context and, and look at our, our metric here, and in comparison to the metric of the, of the state, we're still well within this, you know, the hybrid model of two to seven per 100,000. Right now, we're at four. Even if we were at 5.5, the positivity rate's still relatively low. And, you know, so if this was working appropriately, we would be saying, okay, Ed, please explain why we had three on this one day, or four on these two days combined, because one may, their confirmation may have come in a day later. And that's, here's the context of it. And I think that's why it's important to have the conversation, because the context matters, as we all know. And then what I do is I also look, how is this impacting in terms of our schools? Like what, where's it hitting our population of kids? And what we'll notice is, you know, age zero to 17, actually zero to 20, there were no cases, or are no cases in September. If we go back to the August, we had a couple, and those have been cleared. You'll have a, on the 28th, you had one, a 13-year-old, and it was cleared. A 10-year-old, which this is almost done on the 29th. But that's it. So, again, trying to keep everything in, in perspective. I think Ashland's in pretty good shape. And, you know, I, I need to emphasize with our community, and I did in an email, I haven't sent it out yet, that, that we all have to do our part. If we want kids to be in schools, we need to continue to be vigilant with our use of, of face masks. We need to be vigilant in terms of our physical distancing and, and making really good choices in a Labor Day weekend, and we've seen upticks after holiday weekends. So we'll, you know, I look forward to seeing some of the data next week, but I don't think that data's really gonna be indicative of, it'll, it'll probably be the 16th data. Would you agree, Ed, two, a week, two weeks after the holiday, to see if there truly was an uptick? Because of the holiday weekend.
Jim, you said that email's going out later today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go, yeah. For, for me, Aaron, I, I want to have this meeting first. And the data you see in the red, that's what will be shared every week with the community.
Okay, 'cause that is, like, when you sent us the data last night and then this morning?
Yep.
My thought was exactly that, to send an email to the community saying, look, we jumped two points in the positivity rate. We're going into Labor Day weekend, like.
Right.
Don't put hybrid at risk.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, good point. No, but that's what I committed to doing, is every Friday after this meeting, sharing this data with our community as well.
Hey, Jim, and you mentioned cleared, and I think it's probably important for people to understand how we do the 14-day average, and, and keep me honest with how you and Ed are doing it. The clearing is just a tracking mechanism that, that Ed's doing as well. As it relates to the 14-day average, if, it's the date you, you are reported as, as testing positive, and that date is the date, no matter whether you're, you're cleared or not, it's the, it's that 14-day window, and it's the count of, of those. And for the purposes of calculation, you're, if you're, if that date is in the window, you're counted, whether you're cleared or not. And even after you're not cleared anymore, if that, if your report date is outside of the 14-day window, you're not counted in the, in the number when you were calculating the per 100,000.
So, yeah, just so you understand what, so you see that column with, which shows completed? So when we clear somebody either from isolation or quarantine, I need to go into the Maven system and change a field to completed. That's how DPH is getting that data back, that that person is either out of quarantine or isolation.
Right, but, but I'm talking of as far as the rate per 100,000.
It's still included.
The, the cleared has nothing to do with it.
Correct.
The 14-day window, it, it itself kind of is a self.
Yeah.
Guiding thing for the data. And I, because there, there has been some question from people around that. Is it active cases? Is it any, and it's like, no, it's, they're reported on date X, and when that, and for the time period, date X is in that 14-day window, that person is counted. When they're outside of that, regardless of whether they're still being, you know, finishing up quarantine or whatever, they're not in that calculation for incident rates.
Right. So, yeah, so Paul, good point. So if you, if you look at the 824 that I just highlighted up here, that, that individual and 828 are, have, have, are no longer quarantined and have been cleared. They're still in the daily 14 rolling number. So here's the nine-year-old, and here's, you know, but those, if you took those out, we'd be down to nine.
I just think for people that there's.
That's fair.
Questions about that, because they think, hey, is it the active cases? And, you know, and that's.
Only confirmed.
That would be kind of, kind of crazy to try to.
Yeah, yeah. So, but good point. So, so that's where we are today. Again, I think this is just our, really, it's our first time, you know, having this type of meeting, and, and next week we'll have three weeks of data to look at and, and continue to, to monitor this. But I feel comfortable that, that we are still moving forward in the hybrid model with our, with our staff and our students. And this is our second week. We just wrapped up with our professional development, and we have another week of it next week, so.
Jim and Ed, do you, do you think there's any? I'm sorry, is Kathy trying to speak or something?
No, it's not me.
I thought I heard somebody else, you know, you wanna talk over someone. Do you think there's any benefit to trying to put together something that explains the, the statistics and what they're, how we're interpreting them? And I, I look at like the positivity rate. I don't think very many people, it was clear from last night, I don't think very many people understand what that means and how that impacts decision-making. And it's not about the cases that fall into that. It's about figuring out, are you missing cases because you're not doing enough testing, right? And, and that's what that positivity rate means. And, and like I said, it was clear last night that that, that people still don't really understand how we're interpreting. And a positivity rate that is anywhere near eight means, holy cow, you, you are, you're missing lots and lots of cases, and that you're probably, you know, nowhere near the testing. I mean, where Massachusetts is over the last, the last month, according to John Hopkins, we're at 0.42% positivity, right? So those are night and day situations, and it has nothing to do with your incidence per 100,000. It has to do with, are you missing, how many are you missing? Are you testing enough? And so, do you feel there's anything, and, and I know it's hard to try to put something down, but do you feel there's any benefit to trying to come up with something that explains how we're looking at this, our strategies, and what these, you know, what these data points mean to us?
So, one of the numbers, Paul, that we are only able to obtain on Wednesdays is the total amount of people tested. We don't, I don't, I, there's no way for me to pull that data daily. So like, so until we get that Wednesday data from the state, that'll tell us how many Ashland people were tested. So that's, that's, I think, part of the issue why I can't literally do that every single day, because we don't, we, we have no way of pulling those numbers, even though we know obviously that Ashland people are being tested daily. Especially, especially with the three testing sites that are now open in Framingham.
Yeah, and, and even the, even the positivity rate of testing, you get two. Yeah, and, and even the, even the positivity rate of testing, you get too localized and, and, you know. Uh, that, that number gets a little challenging to, to, to make heads or tails of too, it can be swayed either way, right?
Uh, right.
You know, when you get to, to, to lower numbers, that's why I think we, Jim and I talked about using, making sure we're using the state data on. You know, are we as a state, you know, still testing enough, but I, I just think there's so much. This is, this is complex for people that even, you know, have spent the time to, to look at it and. Um, for other people, it, I think it can be a challenge, you're like, hey, the positivity rate's going down, that means, no, that just means we're testing enough. Right?
Right.
Ed, the number that you get on Wednesday, is it just for the prior week or is it in total?
I can give Jim whatever he needs, I've been giving Jim the last two to three weeks worth of data. By date, so I, I just saw, I give him a list, I give him a spreadsheet by date. So, but I can literally pull it daily, it's very easy.
Okay.
And, and Erin, part of it is, we, we, we do look at it daily, because it, like I said, it does change, like Ed's updating me. Right now, on, on the twenty one year old case, right?
Right.
Um, so I think that's, that's why we speak, you know, daily and to get it updated. So I try not to overreact, because again, a week ago, we had someone from Framingham on our list. That we had to get removed, and, and the state won't update that until the following week.
Right, right. Um, Ed, would you mind, the extract that you pulled from Maven, would you, could you share that? Just like, just as like the data scientist on the committee, could you say, could you share that with names redacted?
I don't get names, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't send.
Let's be clear, I don't get any of that stuff.
What I do is I send Jim the date.
I, I give. I'll just forward it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, and basically just to explain the sheet, I give Jim the case, I give him the event date. And the create date, and then what the current status is.
And the age.
Event date, the test positive date, Ed?
Yeah, so that, so, right, correct, and then, and I give him the ages.
Okay.
Because I'm trying to plot it based on age, so.
Right, so, Jim, um, I would like to gift you, um, an, an EJW custom. Something easy that you won't have to do work.
Okay. Somebody took, what?
Who would he be if he did not have to do work?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I also wanna just remind the committee too, that I give Jim extra data too. I also give him probable cases, just so he can look at those, um, you know, and. And I graph it all out, what's, what's current, what's cleared by age group.
So, the, but the probables are not in Maven, right, those are just.
Yes, they are.
They're not part of the number, though.
They're not part of the number, right, because a lot of those probables are antibody tests. Where, where a lot of them are just showing a previous exposure that are, that are not currently, currently infectious.
So, and, and to that point, we can, we can talk about, we've had staff even before we had school. Um, say they went and got a test, and we asked, well, what test did you take, and then they say, well, we did a, uh, antibody test and we had it. Or we, um, took another test, we actually require them to do the PCR, um, test, so, the nasal swab.
Can I ask a procedural question about these meetings generally, so, I, I mean, I suspect that now we've kind of gotten, once we get in the right one, we'll go quicker, but. My impression is that, you know, the school committee adopted certain metrics we're gonna look at. But it's still your call, like, a snow day, as to whether or not kids are in a hybrid model or a, um, a remote model. Based on data, is, are you, I, I guess I wanna make sure or find out whether we're on the same page about that. Whether you'd expect us to be taking a vote week to week if anything changes.
So my expectation is that I, the way I thought we agreed was, I would present the data and the school committee. Uh, would, uh, weigh in on whether or not we go into a different model, that they would vote on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I think, again, in, in having the commissioner speak this week, it was very clear that he doesn't want. Us making week to week decisions, looking at, at trend data. Um, because if, if the trend data is showing significant increases. Over a three or four week period, we may wanna shut down the system for a week and be remote only, to see if that helps, or two weeks, so.
And if we were to, well, I guess one other question than that, if we were to make that kind of decision to change a model. Um, on a Friday, would you be thinking that would be implemented in the change the following Monday, or is it more future looking?
That's a good question, I, I think initially I was, I, my, my, my thought was that we would do that for the following week. Um, and, you know, again, I think that's where the commissioner sort of made us, challenged us to think differently. But, but again, I think it, it depends on the data, right, if you've got a ton of cases, that's why I think they're giving us flexibility. Or I, or we ask for flexibility.
Well, I, I mean, Jim, but to that point, I don't think we get a couple of cases notified on Wednesday, and we're making a decision on, on Monday.
Yep.
So, if we saw a trend, your communication today might be, hey, we are trending. We're gonna be, so I think we would have communicated to the community that.
Fair enough.
We may be making a decision next week, so I don't think we would go from, everything's great.
Sure.
To, we're out in three days.
Fair enough.
I think we would be saying, we're trending, we're gonna look at this next week and potentially need to make it two things if something doesn't. If we're not comfortable, and, and I think we could at least give them that much notice.
Well, I think it really depends on what's, what's happening, I guess, I was thinking the opposite, Paul. I mean, if it's true that we're just trending, we're creeping up, you can even say that today, where, you know, Middlesex County as, as a county is like. Higher and, and Ashland as well, and so this conversation, we haven't crossed any line of our own metrics. As well as what we're hearing from all of you about what's actually going on in the buildings, the students aren't even there yet. So, right now, it just feels like a conversation, um, but there could be another point in time where, you know, we've, we've crossed that line. On a Friday, and it would be irresponsible to have people in the building on Monday, you know. If, if we're already there, then what would we be waiting for?
But I guess my.
I think you're both right.
Yeah, we would have had indications that we might, we were approaching being there.
Yeah.
You know, ahead of time, right?
And I think, you know, like, even this conversation be, could be considered, you know, one of them right now, I mean, we are, oh, is it? It's moving in a different direction from what it was doing last week at this time. But not to any point where we need to change our decision.
I think with what I will build for Jim, that will be laid out in a way that's very clear, that when it's shared with the, the. Of that trend, so it won't be reliant just on the discussion that we're having here and the anecdotes. We'll have that historical trend as a part of the reference.
And also remember, if we have a, a cluster of cases within the school system, excuse my dog, um. If, if we have a cluster of cases in the school system, we have protocols in place to shut those down outside of just this. This forum, okay, so.
Yeah.
That, I think that's important, Lori, to your point, what, what if all of a sudden, we get X happens in the building, well, we have protocols to say. The buildings are closed down for X amount of days for cleaning, testing, contact tracing, et cetera. Those are different protocols.
And Jim, can you shut down individual classrooms as well? Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, and, and, and I think, the, I think that's part of what I was getting at before is what. And it kinda goes to why we're doing it, what we're trying to protect, this is all about community spread and our either risk due to that. Or our participation and exacerbation of, right, so. It's not just about the number, the number is an indicator, and so. I, I, I don't think that today's conversation is anywhere near something that is telling us we're creeping. Because of the context that Ed provides us, right? It, it is, so if those four cases were spread out, and the, the contact tracing couldn't link them. That would be more meaningful from a decision making perspective. Than knowing that it is a cluster that is late, right? And that contact tracing has drawn a circle around that, if you will. Then relative to why we would close schools from, from a risk because of community spread or participation in community spread. Then that data is, you know, it's almost like, it would be nice if, if we could have a, a number. That excluded the things that shouldn't be part of our, our, our decision making. And so taking those four out, saying, okay, we understand them, or treating those four, consolidating them down to a, a single case data point. For a meaningful piece of data, right, and that's, that's the challenge where, um. It's really all about community spread and not just about the numbers, if, if I have a family of eight people, we get eight cases. But the contact tracing says, yep, they traveled, they came, came back, and they didn't have any contact with anybody. Well, you know, really, that's, that has nothing to do with the community spread, and it's very well contained, so, and that's the.
Paul, I'll build that in, I'll build that in so that Jim and, um, uh, Ed can. Contextually remove certain cases from calculation, it wouldn't be what's presented, but it would be a reference point.
Thanks.
All right, I know some people on here have time limits, so, um, so I think we're, we're on the same page about all the different things that we're. Grappling with right now, and so Jim, if you, what else do you have to share with us before we move on, I know athletics is on the agenda, but we did that last night.
We did, I, and I think it's just a reference point, I think we're gonna continue to have that conversation, and I will add in data. From the pod, uh, of schools that we would be, uh, competing against those towns. I think that's an important reference points as well, that's all.
And, and, and we also download, I, I went back down for Jim. The state data going back, uh, to the beginning of June, and so there's a folder that the, uh, he'll have up on a website. That's gonna contain all that state data, so people don't have to go back and look, the, the, those, those, uh, those PDFs will be, will be there. Um, they've only, you know, it goes back beyond when they color coded or gave the, uh, gave the different, you know. They expanded the information in the last several weeks, but, uh, but it still gives the, the base, base information going back through Jim.
There's, so, good, Erin.
Oh, I was just gonna say, just a reminder, uh, refresher from last night, it's Ashland, Holliston, Hopkinton, Medway. And Nor- Bellingham and Norton?
Correct.
Okay.
That's right, Stephen's on here, he could.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Stephen, Mark, did you have?
Yeah, just one, and again, this is just a process point, it was something, uh, I think Paul, you mentioned last night, um, during our meeting, and, and I. I guess I wanna make sure, I understand how we're gonna do this going forward, and that is, I think the comment you made, Paul, I think last night was. That, um, athletics would be on this agenda with each Friday morning meeting to kind of talk about it. And I didn't, I guess I had thought that we would be getting into that, um, level with athletics. It seemed to me like we'll make our decision, whatever decision we make on, on the, next Wednesday's meeting, and then from that point forward. Um, the assessment on what to do with athletics is really thought between Jim and Stephen. Um, I didn't think we would be revisiting that issue. It, it seems to me that unless there's something unique in the data that, um, is provided by Jim that suggests school can stay open. But athletics should stop, um, you know, the thing that I thought most likely to be. To occur would be, there's a pocket in one of those other communities, they either close or they go red. Um, their school's still comfortable doing the athletics, but we're not comfortable doing athletics with them. But I would think that that would be a, the dialogue that Stephen and Jim would have, rather than us getting into, I will play Medway but not Hopkinton. So I guess just in terms of agenda setting for all of us, my thought would be, that we really be having the first part of this conversation we've already had. But I didn't know that athletics would be on here as a part of the weekly discussion, so I just.
Yeah, so just give you context, so regardless of whether it's a athletic director or superintendent decision. Um, you know, when I was talking to Jim about it, we thought it was important to have the dialogue with the school committee. And in an open fashion, weekly, um, such that anybody is, can, can, you know, what, so. While Jim wants us to vote on whether we're in or out.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure that even, you know, Stephen and Jim has thought through whether they, they want us to vote on. Whether we're comfortable playing, you know, group A or group B, uh, but. Wanted to have that conversation in this forum with Ed and, and everyone involved. To get everyone's comfort level and, and things like that at a minimum, even if it is, uh, Stevens or, or Jim's eventual call. I don't think we're, I don't think they necessarily want us to vote on it, but I, I, I don't know that we've landed that yet.
So, is it a sense that we would be talking on a weekly basis, not just about academic program, but about athletics in light of? Whatever the COVID, COVID data shows, is that the?
Yeah, for, for, for other, so, for example, Brady just went to ten point nine or whatever, uh, with this, so. If someone's going really wrong, uh, and, and they're trending, and like you said, they could say, yeah, we're still gonna do athletics. And making a decision that we're not comfortable with, um, and so, um, I, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but I think Jim. Wanted us to weigh in on our comfort level with that, and I think Stephen as well, but we'll let them speak to that.
No, it's good, fair.
Okay, yeah, and, and the question really was about, um, Lori and I talked about agenda, we've actually had a little bit of a conversation about this the other day. Um, as to whether or not athletics needed to be on here as a regular weekly recurring thing. And I didn't, I didn't think we were going that route, but I understand where you're at, and if, um, Jim and Stephen want that feedback. And, you know, wanna be able to talk about it in context, and, um, certainly put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't think it would be its own separate category, requiring a discussion every week, but I also thought that the other agenda items. Um, would provide an opportunity for us to understand what is going on in, in all areas. And with the COVID nineteen update, and that if action was required, then we could, you know, either have a, uh, an emergency meeting. Or, or if we needed to take action, there are other ways to do that, rather than having a, a standalone discussion about it every Friday. It, it wasn't my understanding that that's what we were doing either, although, I mean, I don't have a big objection to it. But I, I just also don't want to create, um, anything unsettling for, um, you know, for making a decision. If we do make the decision that athletics moves forward, um, I think just like everything else that we're doing. We will just be checking in, you know, with our updates and then deciding whether action needs to be taken next.
Yeah, I, I mean, personally, I would like to just keep it there for now until, and, and provide that data that's, that's being represented. I think, I think it makes good sense, um. I know Stephen mentioned, hey, if we go remote, kids aren't playing sports, I get that, I mean, that was sort of, that was his conversation last night, but, but I do. Um, shudder to think, I, I wanna make sure we're looking at all data as we're sending our kids out into other communities or other communities coming to us, so.
Yeah, I mean, I fully expected to be, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I expected that to be part of what you were sharing with us.
Yeah, you know, right.
We're just talking about whether it needs to be its own item, and I, you know, we don't need to waste a lot of time on it.
It just, it just for, it formalizes it for me, that's all.
Absolutely, no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Everybody else okay with that? Erin, Kathy, yeah?
Yes, I'm good with that, yep.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
Cause as you can tell, we had our biggest, you know, meeting last night with folks, so athletics matter.
Yes.
We could be changing how we're, uh, delivering education, and nobody seems to care, but, you know.
We have a discussion about how to achieve that thought process. That could be for another day.
Go to, go to European countries, they, they've, they've, they've figured that out, so, club sports only, so. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, so.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, favor, Kathy?
Yes.
Erin, hi, oh.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Yes. Okay.
Hey, Paul, Michael.
Bye.
See you in the next meeting.